Work agenda. See if we can... Capital Improvement Plan, water and sewer. What, uh, is there something new here that we, or are we still... I noticed one thing new on there that's from some other firm, but I don't see a price here.
This was on that, um, the water and sewer rate study, right?
Well, capital improvement plan.
It was a capital improvement plan. We just brought it back here to have it as discussion because we, um, the city council had wanted to bring it back here. That we weren't sure we wanted to do this, so we, I brought it back to the work session so that we could discuss, um, whether we move forward with these or not, because I think we had them on the council agenda. And then you wanted to ha- have further discussion about what the value of them is.
Right, okay, what is this W on financial strategies?
Where?
Company, yes, that's, you had it on here and, but there was, I don't, was that a proposal from them? Or was that just some information from them? It was, uh, roughly page seven of that.
It's just, uh, or it's, it's just background on what a capital plan is. That's all it is, it's just what is it, how you develop it. So it was just so that you had some information about a capital plan.
And I think we wanted...
And why to use it.
I think we wanted Greg's opinion.
Right.
On...
Yep, yep.
Well, that's kinda why I provided this background, information for you, I think, you know, I think, I think when I'm looking at the lot of wastewater treatment facility and I'm looking at the, you know, the, the amount of money that the city has spent on it out there, I thought it was, I felt it was my responsibility as a, as your operator out there to provide what I thought was a good long-range planning tool. I mean, for the replacement of all equipment out there, we're starting to see, we're starting to, starting to do, I mean, most times plants are designed for a twenty-year life. A lot of equipment facilities, twenty-year life, they were halfway there already. And, uh, I gave you this thing so, because it's, you know, it's a pretty simple explanation of what a capital improvement plan is based on a municipal, uh, uh, plan. And, uh, if I could, just read that first paragraph, kind of explains some of the reasons why. I think it's important, and it says, "Background, capital improvement plan. The cities and other local governments often make significant capital expenditures, including issuing bonds without first analyzing the impact such expenditures, analyzing the impact such expenditures may have on future operations and expenditures for other important capital projects. A capital plan is intended to assist municipalities in making choices about which project should be implemented and how they should be financed and when." And then it goes on to say, "A capital improvement plan is a tool to assess the long-term capital projects requirements of a government entity to establish funding of high-priority projects in a timely and cost-effective fashion. Development of a capital improvement plan is intended to ensure that policymakers are responsible to residents and businesses of the community with respect to the expenditure of public funds. A capital improvement plan promotes the provision of continuous, efficient services. The written plan identifies and describes capital projects, years in which funding projects are to occur, and the amount of funding. While a capital improvement plan may be designed to forecast any period of time, it generally extends beyond the current operating cycle." I mean, that's pretty much what we were talking about, like a time, you've got a large plant out here, you've got a lot of money spent in it, you know, what's the most cost-effective way to, to, to replace that equipment? How are you going to fund it, what's the life design of it? And, uh, it's just tools, the working tools to look at. And once you get to that point, it doesn't necessarily mean you have a pump identified, the two pumps identified five years down the road to be replaced, that you're automatically going to spend that money. It means that you're going to have a look at that each year, that plan, unless you have it placed in, uh, in that time to replace, and analyze it during their budget period. And if these can be moved out, it can be moved out, it can be moved up, it can be moved up, some sort of things. So, it's just an important planning tool.
Okay, um, yeah, I'm gonna ask Greg something to Dave Martin here in a second. Um, I agree with you, Greg, I think a three- to five-year plan is important. I think to some, to have some idea where we're going next three to five years is good. My concern with this, with the proposal here, it says, uh, "Task three, develop a twenty-year plan for future capital improvements." Okay, I don't think you can do that. Okay, a very basic personal experience. Twenty years ago, and I bought a digital camera, it was in a five-megapixel digital camera, it cost me fifteen thousand dollars for a camera alone, no lens. I lo- bought one two months ago, a twenty-point-four megapixel camera is the best camera I ever owned in my life for nine hundred dollars. Okay, had I based my capital improvement plan on a twenty-year plan in nineteen ninety-five, uh, it'd be, well, it would've been out of the window and out of the ballpark of three years. Okay, so, I'm gonna ask Dave, okay...
I think Dave will probably speak to that.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that twen- that twenty years is right. I, can we do a five-year plan and, and is that gonna cost the same amount of money?
Well, I, I think the twenty-year plan, I think we're talking apples and oranges. The technology you're talking about versus the components of the wastewater. And, and the thought process would be that you kinda have two components of this. You have your five-year portion, which is a little more immediate, things that you can put more detail, more certainty on that you know are coming up in the short term. The purpose of the twenty-year look is you have components of that, of your systems, that are designed to have a life that extends beyond five years. So there's things that are gonna just, to get your twenty years of life, they need ongoing maintenance, uh, you know, you have pumps that you have to do things with. Um, so it's trying to look beyond that five-year period because you know that you have things that have a life that extends beyond that. I, I don't disagree that as technology changes that, that certainly...
Yeah, and I know there's, it's...
Has an effect on things, but this is really trying to look at your existing facilities, uh, and, and the life that you're expecting ultimately, get it, get from your plant and, and the, the components. That, that was the idea behind the twenty-year. I would say you're absolutely correct also that, you know, it's kinda this five-year, your, your, your most immediate thing is more of a five-year plan. Once you develop this, the cheapest way to stay on top of it then is just to continually, kind of on an annual basis, kind of maintain this as a living document. Some of it's always being updated as you go over it, that, that you're not gonna, um, do this, set it on the shelf, come back and revisit it and start over in ten years. The idea would be that it would be a living document, I think, that Kyle and Greg can kinda maintain as they go.
I know in the past when I worked with them, it's been a big help, not only from the staff, but from the council. But they changed in their, you know, after they looked at this, they were up maybe... The one thing it does do is it also looks at the dollar amount on some of this stuff that you really don't, you know, you know how much that plant cost when you built it, you don't know how much, you know, you really didn't know how much being really in the big book, how much this, this free, free, these equipment, inside the free, free, so, cost this, 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 the cost is going to be to replace it by, 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 down the road. It puts some numbers on it, really helpful, scary sometimes to look at them, but you need to know what they are.
So what's the difference between doing this as opposed to taking what our accountants do, our auditors do? And so I talked to him for a while when they were here, and they do a depreciation based on...
The initial cost, we do.
Initial cost and what they've experienced in other cities and stuff, it doesn't put a depreciation figure on there. Uh, let's, let's just taking, saying, "Okay, we've got next number of dollars of depreciation every year, let's set aside, you know, all of that, or percentage of it, every year, uh, levy for that as replacement cost, as cost going forward."
That would, that would be great, but that shouldn't, you know, you should've been doing that a long time ago.
Oh, we should've been doing this a long time ago too.
Back in his, for the capital improvement plan. So now, we're ten years down the road, we gotta go back, if we went back to what that depreciation schedule was in the audit ten years ago, huge.
Right, but we, we haven't, we have...
It would've been huge right now.
But we haven't been doing this down ten years either, have we, with the capital improvement plan?
Well, I, I think the one piece you're missing out on is that, I think you could start setting dollars aside, which is good, which is really, to hold all this. The one piece you missed is really the, the evaluation of what you got and the existing condition of it that this tries to provide.
Identifying each piece of equipment.
This, this is more of a detailed look at your individual components versus feeling comfortable that we're socking money away than that, if that's, if that's what you wanna do.
And once you have that dollar amount identified for each of those pieces of equipment and everything else, and the life range of it and everything else, well, then you can kinda see what, you know, what kinda dollars you wanna put, you know, you wanna put as far as depreciation into your annual budget. So, um, I think...
I think, you know, the, the intent is...
Anything's gonna be good.
Again, you know, this, this is for you to do or not to do, you know, the, the, the original request is, was from a staff perspective to try to develop a tool for themselves to kinda understand what they have to work with, what they should be planning for, and then ultimately a tool for the council so that as you look and, and plan into the future that, that you have some information to help you do that.
Exactly.
Um, again, like we talked about last time, I'm not, I'm not here trying to sell ya engineering services. It's, if you wanna do it, that's where we're happy to help you.
I just wanna try to do something, I just wanna do my job and provide, provide information.
And I'm looking at nineteen thousand dollars and wanna make sure I make the most bank money I can.
And, and if you think that of the old depreciation method, then you feel comfortable that you have your, your plans for the future, that way that, you know, again, that, that it just falls back on staff more of a year-to-year look at what you got, what the conditions are, and, and, uh, know that the, the funding is, you can set aside when, when you... That's the idea.
Okay, any further questions of Dave, or Greg, or Kyle?
When the plant was built, was there a list of mechanical equipment?
Definitely.
So we got a list of the mechanical equipment, and then we got the records of the scheduled maintenance for...
We have a sched- we have a maintenance plan, yeah, we have a maintenance program, we have developed that. Randy and I put that together, I mean, which is supposed to, the maintenance program is different than the capital improvement plan. Okay, that's, okay, how often, every year, do you grease this piece of equipment or whatever? It doesn't give you a life expectancy on the maintenance plan, it just tells you how you should be maintaining the equipment. Okay?
For, uh, annual cost. And if you take the depreciation and you're putting that money away from it, typically, when it fails, you replace it.
The depreciation usually is placed on the bulk, bulk of the plant.
Yeah.
Okay, all the equipment involved in the bulk of the plant, it doesn't, it doesn't list each one, each of the individual pieces. I think if you look in the plant documents as far as, uh, you know, as a payout to the contractors, you're gonna see the piece of the equipment identified, there should be a cost that's associated with each piece of equipment.
Well, I, I guess, it, I don't know, I don't know how that was, when it was...
Sometimes, or not all the time, I don't remember seeing that for this one, but there is...
Yeah, I don't know if it was...
There are usually, you know, there are prices identified, you know, so, uh, that's the price, that's the project, it's...
But...
You pay his, you pay the contractors based on...
Now, I understand what Dave is saying about, or what you're saying is about giving a estimated time life of a piece of equipment, but that's an estimate. It may fail tomorrow, it may last ten years longer, it's supposed to, you know, what you think it's gonna be. So it's, it's nothing that's gonna say it's gonna fail on this, this day, you better replace it the day before.
No, absolutely not. You're just being proactive, trying, you put the numbers together based on the history of a piece of equipment.
And that's what I'm trying to, um, wrap my head around, whether or not we, we can accomplish the same thing with the depreciation thing as opposed to...
Oh, you mean you're just saying, whatever piece of equipment comes up, well, then you use that depreciation.
Right.
Probably something like that.
Yeah, and may it be up to, opposite of counsel to these, make a determination, we're gonna use so much of the, of depreciation that the auditors have identified for us, we're gonna put levy that every year into a fund for upcoming expenses.
I think that would be great, if you use, you know, you would have a, you know, a methodology to use for your depreciation schedule, if you use what's in the audit, you may have, you have justification for it.
Right.
Anybody that has an argument as to how much it's going to weigh in on budgets.
Or, no, we're not, I'm not fully figuring out the, the, the sky, I'm looking...
You're trying to figure out that number and what to put away, I mean, that's good.
I think just how you go with the years go on, doesn't always change anything.
Just justification, I still have...
Well, they, they have an estimated life, they, they have a best-end life based on their experience in other cities and stuff like that, and so it's gonna be the same for that twenty-year life.
About a hundred and seventy-two thousand, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year for the wastewater, about staying for the water plant. What's it cost for the water plant? I have all that, yeah, we're still...
It was a hundred and eighty for the wastewater plant for this year. We were to have the full depreciation cost to be about a hundred and eighty dollars. So, and you'd have to figure out, you know, you have, if you wanted to fund that, you'd have to see how to... You could certainly bring something like that back and put that into your rates and...
But you have to, we have to fund this capital improvement plan too, if we're gonna have a capital improvement plan, that's gonna tell us how much we should be putting aside too every year.
Correct, and it's kinda with the funding, you know, we recommended at a budget meeting, is, is a funding, you know, rate study helps develop that, how you're gonna pay for it.
Well, rate study, we got the rate study going on with...
Yeah, I know that, that's...
No, so water.
Right, but I, I haven't started that yet, waiting to see what the outcome of this was gonna be, or if the direction's gonna be, we're gonna use a percentage of the depreciation amount. That, that, I will need that piece before I can meet with Minnesota Water.
Okay, uh, that's a council decision we need to, okay. So, okay, any further discussion, questions here, or is, uh, we're gonna put this, bring this back to the council next meeting and...
Appreciate it.
Make a decision.
Okay.
Any further questions for Greg, Kyle, or Dave about this?
Is there a way to get this done for us?
Um, well, this is...
We've already asked that question.
Yeah.
I know, I'm asking it again, I'm probably asking it, I'll ask you that to come from the...
We revised the scope once already, I guess, um, you just tell, tell us what you don't want us to do and we'll, you have to take it out.
We did reduce it quite a bit, the scope of work, I think, to get to this point, so, I mean, this one...
So if it's not twenty years, it doesn't go down? Doesn't matter, 'cause most of the work is up there.
You still gotta go and look at everything to figure out what's in your five years, so...
It's a lot of money for a tool that we don't know, we don't necessarily have to implement every year. Look at the fire department, a C I P, I look at that thing and even the park board, we push things back, we push things back, we push things back and...
But the example for this is look at how the pumps have failed. We would've known that, we would've planned for it, but then we had to set aside doing some other improvements so you could do the pumps, and we, we would've, we would've...
We should've planned for those things, we should've planned for those things without.
Well, we would've known with that, or if we would've been doing depreciation, some of the depreciation expense, we would've had the funding.
Right.
Right.
From, from staff's perspective, that the, the goal of this is to make sure that the city has a long-term...
Enough money.
A big-picture view of this asset that has a tremendous value. And making sure that you're not too shortsighted about making sure you understand that, that's a, that's a big investment out there, when the time comes to replace some of these components.
Mm-hmm.
They're big-dollar things. Now, if you, if you feel comfortable as a city that the depreciation gets, uh, to...
Right.
Putting money in the bank for, you know, for that, that rainy day, um, then, you know, then it's a question of how much detail do you want to go with that to determine what that amount is? This was supposed, this was intended to be a detailed look at it versus a general look at it, yeah. And I think that's, that's up to you to determine, um, if the more general view, if you feel like that gets to where you're trying to go, then, then you got it.
When we, when we look, and we have kinda been doing that stuff already, you have, if you look back in your budget, you see a cap, your, your capital improvement plan, and you see some things that we've identified in there as we've been going along, but I think it's important, you know, for, to look at everything, you know, and, and, uh, what, you know, what... 'Cause this plant is getting older and it's just, I just felt it was important to put it out there.
No, that's fine, I...
Um, I, you know, I, I just wanna, you know, be a, do my, do my...
It's a discussion, we need to have, uh, Luann.
By providing you this information, what you guys wanna do with it after that.
For the next thing, can you provide for us, we've got all details on the C I P proposal, provide for us the depreciation amounts that the auditors have identified for the various enterprise funds?
I have them already, I did them already, so I did do them, I'm sorry I forgot them.
So we can see that comparison, now we need to discuss and make a decision?
Yep.
So, okay, compost site.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, we have, the staff has come before the city council on several occasions about the cleanup of the compost site, only to find that the suggested cleanup has some obstacles that need to be further addressed. Carver County has committed to the city to assist us financially in the cleanup of the site. Staff has met with Dale Dunn, who has a current lease on the property, to see if he could assist the city with the cleanup. Dale's proposal left the city with additional costs above the county's commitment. Staff called the City of Hutchinson's compost facility and put the city in touch with the Shakopee, Midwak and Sioux community. The S M S C proposed cleanup of the compost and chipping of all the tree branches at the location, but they also requested financial assistance from the city, but it does not exceed the amount that the county has committed. The, uh, both Dale Dunn and S M S C are proposing to screen the compost that's left, and then they will keep all of the compost at the site except for a thousand yards for the city residents. S M S C is proposing to chip the wood that is at the site in return for a lease to be able to operate a wood brush site, not only for the mayor residence, but for local contractors. In return for the agreement with S M S C, they would operate the compost site for the city and do all wood chipping at no charge. Staff did meet with Dale Dunn and requested that he submit an early termination of his lease, so if the city wanted to engage services of S M S C, the city would be free to do so. However, Mr. Dunn was not amenable to doing that and cited financial reasons that he couldn't. Staff met and discussed what other options the city has, and staff would like to propose a following cleanup of the site. Well, in between thi- this following cleanup, I'll keep going, Public Works will rent a screener and use Carver County Public Works loader to screen the remaining compost. The city can then sell the excess compost. Public Works staff will collaborate with Watertown and Norwood DeYoung America Public Works on the chipping of the branches, and the city would just continue to operate the site and give Mr. Dunn his notice that we no longer want to have a contract with him. There are a couple of ways that the city can give notice, one would be just to give notice in the agreement with a one-year notice, or we could give him notice that he's not performed as agreed upon in the lease agreement. Council will need to discuss that option, and we'll have to do that at a regular meeting. Well, in between then, now, um, Mary Davy came to me with a proposal for the cleanup of the site, which you have in front of you, called No Stress Gardening and Landscape. And I do have the, the maps on, I can bring them up on the big board if you want me to, otherwise you do have them in your packets in the, the smaller size. She is present tonight, I don't know, um, how much information you want from her about this, but this is a, a significant cost also to the city in order to, um, have them come and clean up this site. So, um, again, you know, we talked about leveling it, we talked about, um, screening it, but...
So I've, I've not been out to the site since, now, oh, I need some compost this year, so, but anyhow. Still don't know how the way is. Um, what is, what's the condition out there, Kyle, what is...
Well, currently it's kind of a mess. It's been piles that have been left there, full of garbage, I mean, compost and garbage mixed in, a lot of plastic bags, pretty much the best of the order, there's all plastic bags. Um, things, uh, there's some grating issues, I know we had a board, you kinda, I think you tried and smoking it, either the way it's been to the pond and everything, and you have some trenches going, and it's covered with rain. Kind of, I don't know, it's not very, it's just a mess, it's, it's kinda...
Okay, what's our goal with the site, what's, what's our, what's our goal, what do we want? Do we just not get it, play nothing?
As of right now, I'd just like to get it cleaned up.
Play nothing?
I mean, we get a loader out there, it's like we could push some piles out, get a loader and a screener and get it screened, get it a nice, you know, screened, black, all right, dirt or all right, comboed.
And grow grass.
Yeah, grow grass, do whatever. They, this, and then level the berm, the berm in front currently right now is two feet, so we can't mow it and do anything with it, so then this whole, the knee's really crazy on it. So get, uh, get Sean or someone out there with the loaders and just to level it, kinda push it down, smoke it a little bit nicer so we can mow it. I mean, the city has their capability to mow it and do everything, maybe even do, take care of it, it's just a matter of getting it to that point. So, and I know Watertown, they, they operate their own compost site, and I know, I think they'd be the same people that run the, the, yeah, so it's just a matter of... I nearly talked to them, or I know Luann has talked to them about, um, using them as a, getting the brush and all that kinda stuff, but they drove by and they said our pile wasn't quite bringing up yet. I think that's just something I might as well just figure out. Wasn't pushing everything up and organizing it in the first stock, so it was all a ton, I do that.
Okay, and, your name is?
My name is Mary Davy, I'm from, just, uh, New Orleans.
Okay, and I read through your proposal, and you're, in essence, giving us the same thing, is just get it all back, get, ultimately seed a bunch of them with grass, right?
May I back up just a tiny bit? And it is, um, I want, I want to leave, to probably talk about it one more time. Just, Mayor, councilmembers, please, um, thank you for taking a little bit of your time. I quite accidentally came upon this, this project that, uh, we've kinda watched for a very long time. It may not seem like it at this time, but it is a really tremendous asset to the community. And in observing that, it appears you're having a little difficulty taking care of it, I approached the city administrator with a plan to try to get this process back online for you. And I realize that it appears to be a pretty big mess. But what I would say to you is, it's not quite as big a mess as it might appear. I think the ways to taking care of it, though, need to be considered so that you get the best outcome. And I don't think it's quite, with all due respect, about a simple matter of just shoving some piles around or you're gonna have more mess with what you got. I think it's very important that you recognize that there are some products out there that will have to be handled in a certain way now, today, sometime, whatever, but you have some materials that are going to have to be landscaped by reason of what they are and how they're done there. Um, I'm not, I, I, I don't believe in, in vilification or vindication or any of those things. I did some investigation to try to look at the fact that you had an idea of what was out there. So if you don't mind, I'm taking Minnesota for easy math, has, I don't know, did people have a chance to redo these at all?
They got them in the package, yeah.
Okay, so what you have in your pile, very quickly though, right now, if you can orient here to your entrance, these particular piles, this pile and these piles, take them in those groups. These piles right now are materials that have been hauled into the site, to best of my knowledge, those are materials that are not from residents here. Those are materials that came in with a previous operator under, uh, Man Vitale or Minneapolis, but they are primarily, primarily yardless. They have been ground once, I think they've actually might have been screened once, and even though it doesn't look like it, pretty good material in those three piles. They will have a fairly high yield of good finished compost. This particular pile is your way of opening the room. That is material that was hauled in as a part of, or in the completion of a Phase One project that Carver County did with, with a P C A grant on a compost testing project. You were one of the first sites that were built to a technical specification for what is called an S S O compost, single-source organic compost site. And that particular material was hauled here as a portion of that county test project when the first initial site was closed down to Minnesota R C Hardbury. So what's in that product pile right now is the things that came out of the initial experiment when they started single-source organic. They did a test experiment where they collected material from a test group of home, as well as the schools and public facilities and that kinda thing. So what they did is, for instance, the food link, you seen kids go through the line and, and be there replaced. So once they realized they were going to collect these, initially you didn't, you didn't have a good intention of how that material was collected, so there's everything in there that's single-source organic. Uh, silverware, trays, acronyms, milk cartons, and that kinda thing. Well, again, it was the experiment, it was learning how to handle single-source organic. All of that went out, and they got into the compost site and were like, "Whoop, that problem here." So, that material, when that site, when that site had to be closed due to objections by the locals or smell, that is ground material from the left of that experiment, and it has been cooked and composted several times, and it has been screened at least once. But what you have in there is the result of that process, residuals from that compost. There will be some... some finished compost that will come from screening of that, but a very low rate compared to anything else out there, that material, now, we went out and we did field measures and truly having your buyers, a fair amount of time, giving you a real of numbers, not that looks like this much, kind of thing, um, our best estimate is that can be handled and double screened, now, remember, the objective here is to get out the materials that are truly have to be taken to land, or landfill, and they will go in municipal solid waste, however, those things are the lightest things in the pile, so the cheapest way to get at that pile for disposal is to screen it, get the heaviest things up, get as much as the stone, get as much of the sticks, get as much of the clay, and compost ultimately out of that pile, we estimate with the process that we put in front of you, that we can probably get the residuals that remain on this site down to about three hundred fifty tons, if we do it at the right time of year, which is, remember, this goes out by tonnage, not by volume, so, pretty, it's pretty important that the screening process and the handling process be done so that you don't pay the, the rubble out water, so, the A, B, C, D are your existing materials, and those, these materials are truly the result, most likely, almost exclusively, of city residents in the last couple of years, makes sense? So what you have here is your brush that needs to be ground, the trees, the grass that needs to be ground, and these are materials that were previously ground once while waiting for compost, these need to all be ground mixed and actually cooked, there's nothing near that's immaterial, okay, piles one, two, and three, once they're screened, you'll have a, a relatively small amount of residuals, that are identified with quantities in packets, and then you have finished compost, your rubble pile is merely something that just needs to be cleaned up, but we're going to finish the rest, so the objective was to try to help you take this site, recognize what's there, give you what I believe is a, is a proper and, and good tactical strategy to approach this quickly and efficiently, return your site to, to a good working condition, and to give you a way to approach Carver County, um, sure, give you a way to approach Carver County on partnering with you, because again, in my humble opinion, and I have some background in this, and I provided the city administrator some background on this, too, it came here through that process, and I think there would be reasonable, I think it would be reasonable in helping you take care of that, and that's why I broke this out into these phases, so you could see where those costs are made on, what we're promoting then, is after the phases of cleaning up what's there, one, two, and three, in your, in your packets, and actually four, this is what it should look like when we finish up here in late spring, beginning of summer, we would put a hundred and fifty yards of compost for citizen pickup, we would have your new drop off area ready to go, we would have this pile, would be those piles that were screened, residuals, and then these are the residuals from what's there, we would hydroseed all of this, and we would make an attempt, adjustment to the berm, clean it up, so that it is easily maintained, and the whole area would be hydroseeded, the idea being that we would hydroseed it in a way that's something that's meant to be a low melt, with the exception of maybe some trimming, once a year, it'll only ideally be made once a year, and we maintain your And I don't know, can I get the three?
Yep, let me do that.
That would be, look at that, we, we couldn't begin hydroseeding in the finish year back until we had early spring, early summer, this was how we would leave, intend to leave it for you by the end of this year, we would have the final processing of the piles that have never been grown before right now, use that up, we would push your existing material from the twenty fifteen season up, ready for you for the twenty sixteen season, you'd have a, a pad, an operating pad available, and all of this is in full maintenance for the final load for the season, and Kyle, I believe actually brought up a good point, one of the things that I wanted you to get out of this season, a chance to work, and we would love to help you try to figure some of these things out, is, if you're going to have your site, what's the schedule going to be, because let me tell you, you're bringing in a half million dollars of equipment each time, your processor, you bring the grinders in and the loaders necessary to run it, it's big equipment, the most expensive thing you do is mobilize it, and if you don't know about running it, you can spend a lot of time renting it and not setting out products, so I caution you, there's a fair learning curve in operating that equipment, the second thing I would say to you about that process is, you probably will not be operating it, you will not grind and, and produce material, judging from what I've seen, you'll, you'll get a little bit more in two, maybe even three years, but if the site is maintained properly, then you bring that processor in, say every second or third year, you prep it out, and you process it if you're, if you go forward, but it never has to be enough, and it shouldn't be, you have a really, I know it doesn't feel like it right now, but you have a little diamond in the rocks there, there's a considerable amount of money that has been invested in infrastructure to make that functional, I sure would love to see it work for you, what we did is, I, I made the commitment to the city administrator that we would put a process together that would be set based upon cost, based on best, field measure estimates of what's there, in good partnership to get this done, and putting a value back to the city on finished compost that we would purchase from this, this gets this done, it gets it done in the most expeditious manner, and it deals with the white elephant, as you would.
Okay, speaking of white elephant, of your total estimated project cost of thirty eight thousand dollars, how much, just a quick figure, how much that thirty eight thousand is spent on fixing up that white elephant?
Actually, what I would tell you, refer you to, is phase five, phase five is the biggest chunk, represents the biggest chunk of handling the white elephant class, because what we do is, before we're bringing the screener and grinder in, in the, in the first part of the year, we would put the first screening on that material, again, to take it out, we'd leave it there to do a cook and a dry, and then it would be re-screened, and we would look to do phase five in late summer, I'd love to get it in with, uh, I mean, we have a dry zone, not in the obvious, but you get that part, um, so I would say not exclusively, but the value on the lay pot, the phase five is largely found in that, not exclusively, but it's a good number.
I'm wondering if, if, if the white elephant was largely Carver County's test site that caused the problem here, maybe we need to go to the county and ask them to pay for it.
I, I would be happy to take this proposal with Mary's, uh, approval, and meet with Marcus Abinon and see if they would finance this cleanup for us.
Yeah, if, if the county uses it as a test site, and now we're left with twenty two thousand dollars was the expense to clean up, that should be our expense, that should be the county's expense.
Well, they're, they're offering ten, but they're thinking that we're just going to, there's been more information that's been provided by someone
They'll hold it back down to the car to Chaska and dump it in a lot of
So I, but, again, we could do that, I could go to them, and I, I had thought about that, too, is that we could go to them and ask them to finance this over three years and give us ten thousand dollars over three years, which would get us to where we need to be, and so I guess I would be willing to do that if the council wants me to.
I'd like to see us, uh, go after Carver County a little more, because it's kind of, uh, presumptuous on their part for, for us to clean up their mess.
Yep. To whatever extent it would be helpful, I would be delighted to participate in that, what I want to leave you with, though, is, I don't, I, I would ask that as easy it is, and, and as a burr under your saddle as this is, try to resist for a little bit, make a bad guy here, well, I, I don't think anybody's put a special number out there intentionally to, to dump it here, I think
No, I'm, I'm not
You know, it came as part of a process
Yep.
And, and a lot of things happened in the economic downturn that weren't good for people, and I just don't think anybody took the time to work it through, to figure out what this cost is.
No, and I would agree with that, I don't think Marcus probably even has an idea, he's probably just offering up ten thousand, thinking that that would, that's going to help us get rid of it, and
I, I think that's
But I think that if he were given this information, that he is knowledgeable enough, that he would say, wow, I didn't realize it was this much, and then he would work with us to help us be able to finance it.
I think you have something substantial to talk about, it's already made the overture, and I'd like you to take it in that light.
Right.
One other detail I would share with you, and I truly just got the email back, that administrator is my way here tonight, I did approach Waste Management, the idea, when I initially started looking at this, I just bone hit me, was thinking, because that's kind of my neck of the woods, um, but in talking about this with Natalie Administrator, looked into the, we do, we do have the option of the going coal landfill, and I approached Waste Management and asked them, and said, you know, here's kind of what's happened, do you think on a one time basis, you might be able to help us, and I will share that email back with you, they have given us a preliminary, what I think is a, a very respectful number, um, to help get rid of it at a substantially reduced rate from the level to these, so, so I will share that with you, and there's a lot of folks who want to try to help do this, including us, um, so with that, I'm always available for questions, but we tried to give you something to work with, and truly, I think there's, there's wonderful things that you can have out there, it can be of service to the city as it grows, and if, if you end up using it or taking it back in the long, long term for how it works, it's ready for that, but it can be a great site for you, and we'd like to have a good chat.
Okay, thank you.
Very well thought out and planned, presentation, that's my information, thank you very much.
Yeah, I, I, I like
Kind of cleaned it up in the, or
I like that, but I, I would like to see approach of Carver County, get some more help from them, because
Okay, I can do that.
I think we do, okay, it's, uh, eight thirty-five, do you want to go through any more, or do you want to call it quits for tonight?
Can we do them quick?
We can do them real quick?
Can I do them really, really quick, because the one I have to do, the additional FEMA funds, because I need to get an order of, of, and to them by March sixth, we can, we had, when we had it spring flooding last year, the thought about, we are going to be hooking up the storm sewer from the manhole in the wetland across, um, council member Stevie McFadden's property to the, to the manhole in the park, there's pipes that have to be put in, we can actually apply for FEMA funds for that, so, because that would assist in, um, remediating all that water that backed up, so I can do just that section, or, when Dave and I talked about it, we said, we need to go from the pond down here on Seventh to the Crow River and finish that out, too, so do you want us to ask for money from FEMA, and how much do you want us to ask for, should we ask for all of it?
All of it.
And get it from the, from the pond to the
Ask for as much as possible.
All right, that's what I needed to know, open house for the roundabout, do you want to do an open house for the roundabout from Mary Lou's and High, or we, or, or not, do we want to let the community know, or do you not want to do one, what do you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay, so Dave and I will schedule an open house, and we'll let you know when that'll be.
You're on, you're on that thing.
Boulevard, the boulevard tree policy, I can bring back to another meeting, and the iPad use policy, just so you have it, um, in front of you, that's all I have, is that fast enough?
That's good.
I was actually
Good deal.
Can't room all that, anyway.
Yeah, going to adjourn, huh?
What's that? She should, yes, (laugh) okay, we are adjourned.